I'm a thirty year old man like trying to catch up because there was like voter that wasn't taught to me and doing going and learning about the parties and this stuff wasn't taught to me. So now that I'm in a position now and I understand how this world works and I understand the importance of politics. It's like, man, why was nobody feeding me stuff at early so I could be savvy and up on game? So now I'm going to feed it to our youth and you this is important. You want to make some change. You gotta get up in this world. You gotta know what's going on. So from the sense of what we were trying to do with getting the young people involved in the in the in the past, you know, election that just happened. I think that's the change. Like we gotta we gotta feed this to these kids. Hey, man, this is what's going on. All right. Welcome, world. Welcome, family. Uh, we on another another episode of the E L two A podcast. I am your host, Jamie Gilmore, Jr. Uh, to the right of me, I got Mr. Military Man, Mr. Crafts, Mr. My McConico. Uh, to the right of him, you got the rocket, Mr. Eddie Rocket. And then we have our special, special esteemed guest, uh, city councilman, Ira DeTe. Uh, thank you for joining us today, sir.
No problem.
So this is the thing, we always start our podcast, uh, with mental health checks. We feel that as men, you know, men, we we don't check on each other enough. Especially as African American men, uh, we, you know, it was a point of time you were raised that it was kind of soft to talk about your feeling. You were soft. Um, now we get into this, it's a different day and age these days and your feelings are very important. They weren't important back then, but they're even more important now. Uh, so we asked from a scale of one to ten, how are you feeling? One being the worst, ten being the best, and then you can just tell us why. So how are you feeling today, sir?
I'm about a nine.
About a nine. Why is that?
Cause I'm on top of the world.
Top of the world. Like, can you can you can you explain that? What is on top of the world out of that thing?
Well. There is an alternative.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's not good.
Yeah, yeah.
Somebody can be walking on top of it.
Yeah.
But on top of that, and when you're talking about mental health, and we're gonna talk about physical health as well, since you're talking about mental health. It's very important that we as men have different types of checkups that, you know, in the past, you didn't go do it. Right. You know what I'm saying? I mean, hey, I mean, your health is very, very important as well. And we have a lot more stress in the world now with the, as we was talking about earlier, with new technology. Uh, you know, when I came along, we wrote stuff. We wrote a letter. The letter had to take six, seven days to travel. Now we can do an email.
Yeah.
And it's there instantaneously, two seconds later, somebody not responding to it. There's just so many things that you do in the run of a day compared to twenty and twenty-five years ago. So it 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 labels on your mental health. Think about an eight hour day of day of work. It took us three days to five days to do what we are doing in one day now. So mental health is very important and your physical health and your prostate, you know, your your heart, you know, I mean, all of these things we need to get checked. And guess what? At a much earlier age.
Right on. And this is the thing I catch on this. So god damn, that you write letters to stuff. You you that far back, you write a little. I mean, see, see the gentleman.
You said y'all don't even y'all don't even do person no more. It's simply, you don't write.
Nah, that's good. And you know what else? Um, it excites me though, um, because I do see you with your physical health. I see you in the gym. You know, I'm in the gym at the order. I see you and I love to see that. I love to see that, you know, you you taking care of yourself. Cause a lot of men, you know what I mean? They take the easy route. And like you say, they don't, they're not going to get the checkups. They're not putting themselves in the gym. So I'm proud to see that you in there. I hope grab some of your come come comrades and then bring them in there with you as well.
You know what's called what time I'm going. Cause when I go five and I go six. But 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 the point is, it is it's important for sure that the do health. I I try to swim a little bit. Instead of, you know, I don't go to the zone to swim. I go to the life, it used to be called Lifetime Fitness and uh, Advent Health.
Gotcha.
And 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 go use the pool and try to keep my little stroke going.
That's what I say. Uh, you should build devastating soul. Rock, we met.
I'm a ten. I'm a ten. Uh, I started today. I really in a in a real good, um, spiritual mode. Um, at the house with the family and then just been going in the schools today with the kids, man. It was a, it was a great, great day today. And then Mr. Mr. My thing, man, you gotta, you gotta live up here right now. With ten, man.
Yeah, I'm I'm nine. Feeling good day. I just had a minor issue, uh, at one of the schools. But other than that, like you say, we we're above ground, so you can't really complain too much. So. Yeah, yeah. And I'm gonna say eight. Uh, Mr. But they energy, he brought me up to love it to eight. I was a seven, man. This morning I woke up with, I had a dream last night. And this is a message to you, world, to our watchers. I had a, I had a dream last night and I had a headache throughout the whole dream. And you know, obviously it's a dream. So I, you know, when I wake up, I expect my dream to be over. I mean, that 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 dream came into, you know, I had that real life headache. And it's funny because as I say, you know, I go in the gym for five AM in the morning. When I woke up, you know, I I got a chair right by my bed and I sat in that chair and I was looking at my bed. I thought, boy, I got this headache. I want to just get back in the bed. But it's the other goat getting in my mind. And that's another thing that's what they tell me. So you're a city councilman, right? So. There was an early Mr. But they, you know, a teenage Mr. But they, I'm pretty sure that the guy you are today is not the guy you were the teenager. You had to choose to do some hard things throughout your life to be in this position you are right now. For us to even feel like you're worthy enough to come have a podcast to hear what you got to say. You gentlemen, you did some hard things in your life to be here right now, to be able to sit on this platform, to be talking to people, you know, and be the person you are in our community. We gotta stop allowing people that are doing hard things to make it seem like, you know, things were given to us. We had to do something to get here, Mr. But they, and you know, people, you have to do something to get to where you want to go. So for me and myself, I chose, you know, throughout my life to do a lot of hard things. From people partying, I chose, I ain't gonna say the party, Mr. But they. But I would party and I'd get up the next morning to go work out. I chose to do hard things. When I was in school or college, I would party, I'd do my homework, I'd make sure I passed my test. I always chose to do hard things. This morning. I've built up a habit of doing hard things. So now this morning I have a headache. Super bay, I have a headache, but instead of getting back in the bed, which I could have, I wouldn't be hurting nobody's feelings if I got back in bed. I sat in that bed and I said, let me go to the gym. This headache gonna go away because I built up a callous of doing hard things. And people have to do that. You have to build up a habit of doing hard things. They just don't come to you. You know, you're not just gonna wake up one day and be the person that you want to be. You have to be able to put the work in each and every day to get to where you want to go. You gotta start blaming other people. This is why I could have easily just like, I could have put a call in there, hey, bro, I'm offline for a little bit. I'll call you when I get up. And everything would have been smooth because he would have handled everything. They would have handled everything. It would have been good. Nobody would have been hurt. But I chose to still get up with a headache. We gotta keep doing hard things. But back to my point, I'm an eight. Because of that headache, I've been dealing with headache all day. Still feeling a little bit, but you know, life goes on. We're here with you. Happy to be here with you, Mr. But they. Uh, one thing I want to jump in, uh, so you are a city councilman. So I know you first. I always knew Mr. But they from the auditorium. You know, you've been around for a long time. You you Ocala native, as as you shared earlier. You've been in the community for a long time. So I always knew you as, you know, Mr. But they from the altar. So now you're a city councilman. Jamie Gilmore is a person that always stated that politics wasn't his thing. I'm a thirty year old man and I'm feel like I'm back track, back tracking, trying to learn a lot of things I should have known already. What is a city council? What they do with the mayor? What's the mayor's description? City manager, all these things, learning about who they are. You're a city councilman. I think a lot of people don't know what a city councilman is and what do you do? Can you explain to us, you know, your your job and what's your role as a city councilman?
I like to keep a lot of things simple, so I I don't use a whole lot of words.
Okay.
Well, we we uh, do uh, policies and procedures.
Okay.
We uh, we make the laws, the ordinances. We see that they are fulfilled. In other words, um. Plus, as a city councilman, my responsibility is to listen to my constituents. And you know, everybody think they got, they got everything laid out in their mind. Uh, this is what you're supposed to do. This is what you're supposed to do. But there's a certain thing we're supposed to do and certain things we don't.
Right.
But I, number one, communication with with my constituents. Okay? Try to find out what it is that they want in 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 the area that I serve. And just make sure and you understand, we 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 don't just serve that area. We serve whole city of Ocala. So we have to make things work for everybody. But my main focus is my district. Okay? So those are of of responsibilities of a city councilperson. Plus, we oversee the city manager. He oversees his staff. Twenty-five departments, a bit and twelve hundred employees. The city manager oversees that. In our type of government, which is manager, which is council manager. The mayor is a figurehead. He kiss babies and he do oversee the police department. He don't have a boat, but yet he can veto something. But we can come back and pass it. But he do, he have a voice, but he don't have a voting. City manager, as I said, oversees uh, the twelve hundred uh, employees and the um. The twelve hundred employees. And uh, we as the city, city council members, we take, we oversee the budget. In other words, we approve it. And and remember this, everything for the most part is brought to us. So I'm I'm gonna back up and show you something else. So we have committees and we have commissions. Like we have the recreation commission, which is the tennis golf boards. We have court enforcement. We got a court enforcement board, board. These entities talk about issues on their left. They push them forward. They approve them or they disapprove them. Then it comes to the staff, the city staff. City staff approving or disapplying, and they bring them to us for us to give the okay or the nay. Now, we set up, like I said, policies and procedures, but we do what is called strategic planning. And we we share with the city manager and his directors. What our goals and objectives are. And it's up to them, they have to find a way to fulfill those goals and objectives.
You said, uh, so we have a, you said it's a councilment to, what's it called?
It's it's a manager, it's it's a council manager for our governor.
Right. So there's two parts. So the one that we have, and correct me if I'm wrong, is kind of put in place to, I guess, not get one person that much power to where they can be influenced. And it says, so, cause the other way, the mayor see over everything, a lot of things, which he could be easily influenced. This structure gives more, so it's it's spread out and not giving him that much power, correct?
Right.
And what is the terminology for, so 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 both of them, so our people can hear what you said, it's the, do you know what it's the?
City, um, council manager, um, and then the other one was the, uh. I can't remember when the mayor's more so in charge, but the the way that we have it, to my understanding, it's a greater checks and balance. So it's, uh, so now to your point, you don't have one person that can just sit there and decide on everything. It's more broken down into into. Into zones and districts and different.
And it's challenged.
Yeah.
Can always be challenged rather than one person standing or, you know, saying, you know. He could be, he or she could be bought off or whatever right there. You've got five different people that's like dealing with.
Right. And that's what I, so, um, for your, for you, uh, you over district two, which is the west side of Ocala, mostly west side of Ocala. Uh, when you're running, so your your two priorities that I seen were collaboration and community, correct? I've I've seen, I read that, I heard.
Three main goals are public safety. Housing.
Infrastructure.
And infrastructure, yes, sir.
All right. So in those three things, so why why do you, why are those three things the most important to you?
Well, first of all, safety in all aspects, from from police, fire, health. Our safety of our community, okay? And in that, I'm looking at recruitment practices. For for instance, in police, we need recruitment because I need somebody that look like me to be on that police force. I need to make sure that we get the uh, the number of officers that we need. And I need to make sure that they are very diverse. And they are diverse and they're trained as well. So we have to make sure that they are trained to do the job that we would have them to do. When you talk about fire, same thing. So I want to add something to that. Uh, so in 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 the minority community, you would notice that there's four different areas that minorities don't just run to. One is police, the other one is fire, the other one is water. And the fourth one is electric. The highest paying jobs are in the electric. You can be a journeyman in electric, make eighty, eighty-five thousand dollars a year. Going up on a light pole. Well, we we don't, we don't cater to that that much, right? Uh, water resources, again, another a good paying job. Fire. Now, if you are just a, if you're a paramedic, you don't, you don't make as much. Uh, but when you get into the fire aspect, you do, your your salary go up, you got great benefits. You only have to put in twenty-five years called the high risk jobs.
Um, so the public safety deal, and I'm glad, so I kind of want to break each one of those down. Start with the public safety. Um, and you hear that a lot. You hear people saying about the the, um, getting more minorities and making it more diverse in the the police, um, in that field. Uh, one of my questions is, do you think we're doing that? And two, or is it, is it? What are you doing to make sure that that is happening? You get, cause it's easy to say it. And I've heard if you, any politician, they'll get up and they'll say stuff like that to, cause it sounds good. You know, obviously, especially in the district that you're in. Um, you want your people to think that they are safe because most of District Two doesn't have a good relationship with police.
Right.
So are, what are you doing, um, to make that happen and and is it happening?
Okay. So what I'm doing is uh, collaborating with the police chief, with the fire chief. That these things are necessary. One of the things that we have to minority community, one, we don't, we do not want to be blaming anybody for things that we don't have in our community. Because we can make those things happen if we work collaboratively, if we work together. For instance, when we're talking about the policing, one of the things that I talk to our police chiefs about is community policing. Simply put, getting out of the cars, talking to individuals. So that they know that you are a human being, just like they are. And they don't only see, especially our young kids coming up, they don't only see the police when they're kicking down their door. It's very important that we do that. Also, we inquired about, uh, police athletically. The P A L, the P A L, in Daytona, other places, they have boxing gyms, you know, places where you're going in a maglet with police officers. We need to encourage our kids to be police officers. It's a great living. And ninety-nine percent of our kids make it through, you know, I mean, they they make it, they make it through that. Um. The, those are a couple of things that I'm trying to encourage and I'm trying to repeat. Okay? Again, in talking to police chief, trying to get him like in high school, to have some type of a job fair. Things of that nature.
Um, so do I, have you seen, so since you, I guess, since you started, cause you you took seat in what, twenty twenty, right? Twenty twenty. So from then to now, have you seen any, I guess, success? Are more minorities from the time you started to now in in law enforcement?
Well, we have, we have some minorities that wasn't there, but we also got some that's going. Right about two thousand seventeen, right in there. Let me put this. Uh, us old guys and girls are leaving. Uh, we call the baby boomers. And we have held up a lot of things. When we look back at you all, you all feel like we have, we have held up a lot of things. But our longevity solidified the positions people was in. What I'm trying to get to is that starting right about two, two thousand seventeen, uh, people went to retire. And they were retiring at a fast rate. And it wasn't because anything was wrong. They done put in their twenty-five years. They done put in their thirty years, their thirty-five years. Okay? Uh, we, we had, you know, minority majors and captains and all that retired because they were putting their time deputy chief. And we had chief, alright? So what we got to do, we got to build that back up. And we're not just talking about African American, we're saying minorities in in jail. We need to build up that so that when. Again, our kids run into somebody out there, at least they could look there and see that there's somebody of color in there.
So so you said at the very beginning, um, you were talking about how, um, basically when you over district two. You don't exclusively serve district two, you serve the entire community. So when I think about that that mindset, that mentality of, yes, you have a group of people that you specifically look over. But you still have to keep in mind the 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 overall body of the of the community. That mentality, and I think that's kind of what both y'all are getting at, that that mentality is lacking in our generation. Cause like you said, your generation understood, okay, I can go be a, a police captain, I can be a chief and, you know, work with the entire community. Yes, I'm a minority. Yes, I have specific, uh, things I would like to see in my own community, in the black community. But we're all together. We're we're all one big body. So what do you think happened to that mentality where you have this shift? Because you say a lot of y'all are retired in twenty seventeen and now we don't have the pool of young adults willing to step up. And it's in look at the bigger body and say, okay, I'm a black person in Ocala, but I still have the the all of Ocala I can serve or look towards. Um, cause now it's more so just the city. You have people that's just like, well, I'm just looking out for a black community and that's it. But that's creating this schism that's not, you know, being being amended at all.
Well, you 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 have some people that do that, but I'm gonna think about this. To me, it's hard for the younger people to to look at it in that that uh, fashion. Because when you look at West Ocala, do you see all black people there? Now, when I came along, there was minus nine point nine percent African American. But that's not what you see now, right? When you go to the schools and y'all do y'all program. There's a, there's a, there's a name for it and I I can't say it, but you see mixed kids, right?
Right.
You see a whole lot of them. About ten years ago, there was a gentleman, one, one of these researchers and all, he said that these things don't change.
Right.
And that's what has happened. That's that's why. I I really think. You know, the kids today are saying, I can't be that. Whatever, they're not being guided in that direction and we need to guide them in all directions. We need to make things available. Like I said. For instance, going to the schools, when it, when the kids are junior, juniors and stuff, start promoting, uh, a police fire. Matter of fact, the fire chief have have started a program, they're a mentor program there at the fire station. Uh, with a forty, fifty young people and most of those kids come out of high school. And this is what I'm talking about. We have to engage our young people so that they know that these, these are great jobs to be in. You know, even when we talk about, if we move away from that and we talk about, um, technical jobs.
Right.
Man, you can put an automobile mechanic down when he wearing that patch on his shirt. You know what that patch says? He can demand his wages. No, he don't have to sell. You want to give him ten dollars, you don't have to see for that. Cause that patch say he can go anywhere. Okay? So that's 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 what I'm kicking at. You know, the all of these things, but my my core was public safety. Because I'm very, very concerned about, you know, the things that go on, not only in our community, but throughout Ocala, Marion County, across the state of Florida and the nation. We got to educate, got to educate our young people to the mindset that they can be anything that they put their mind to, because they definitely is capable.
You, uh, so so even with that mindset, so Mars Mars led made a great point that you're, you're not only serving just the, your community, you're serving the entire Marion County. So basically being diverse, you know, within, within your work, within and then, uh, within the the friendships and the the work relationships that you create. A lot of the young men within the community, they don't, within, I guess, your community, they they don't really see that. So as the, I I know Jamie was going back to at the beginning when you were telling us, you know, what your, what your, your job role is. A lot of us within that community, we don't really know what that is and what it, what it entails to be a city councilman member. So I think back, well, you know, when we were younger at the city auditorium, I used to see, we used to see you riding on the golf cart, riding the city auditorium. So that's all we knew. But now when you have a, you know, when you're in the role that you're in, how do we get the younger generation to to know? What a civil councilman, civil ca- city councilman is and that what it takes in order to to be in that position? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Because at at the end of the day is, you know, if we don't, if we don't know it and if we don't see it, a lot of these kids won't do it. You know, so I with, through the works that you're doing now, especially when you're saying being diverse, working with different people, working with different communities. That's a great thing that we we must, we must as a community do in order to grow. But so what what can, are you doing anything for you? So how how long is your uh, position before you, your your next role, your?
Four years.
So you got four years. So are there, is there anything that you're doing in order to go out and promote as well? So I I get, we we get the the fire, um, department, we get the police. Police chiefs and everything and that nature. But so for you, because you're, you are a lead. You're a great leader. And we, you know, we we definitely, we see you as a great leader. There's, we we had conversations on the podcast, but we we've seen older men. That we we seen from a young age up until now, and it's like they're not, they're not leading in the right direction. But for you to be a leader and you know what it, for you to know what it takes in order to to see the community thrive. What are you doing to 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 bring those, those young men out there or to to show these young men that they too can be future city councilmen?
So I have done barbershop talks. We met once here. We are having other meetings because it it it's important to just sit down in a relaxed atmosphere and talk. The the one, one, one of the barber shop talks that that we did at, um. Uh, Derek Pond's place, it was very, very powerful. I greatly appreciate the opportunity to just sit in on that and then hold in when I could. I mean, the barbers got excited, you know, they they, you know, and it had that one gentleman, you know, I mean, he had had some heavy experiences in life. But we had about sixteen, fourteen to eighteen year old young men in here. And 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 sharing things about life and and sharing, you know, they telling us what they see. You know, and then we we try to share with them where we are, whatever, and how they can do it. And I plan on doing things like that. My fraternity will be coming online shortly in Ocala, Cap Alpha Psi, Phi Nu Chi. And we we plan on having a mentor program, okay? Where we address a lot of different things, just like you all address. See, it'll take all of us to to get these things done. Not trying to duplicate nothing that y'all are doing. But we got to show these kids, and I I think I was sharing with, with one of, I think one of you that I got a seventeen year old grandson that's beginning to act up. And and carry on and, uh, hey, listen, I I gotta deal with that now too. You know what I'm saying? And I and I got, I got five grandsons, you know, but uh. Whatever it takes to get them where they need to be. That's what we gonna do. But I I plan on having conversations and not just conversations. Have some activities and things like that that we can draw them to. I don't know if y'all remember this, but we used to take kids to the prison. To show them where they don't want to be, don't want to go. All those things like that. I used to call it scare street, I was there, stuff like that. But actually, I want to try to utilize all the young men that we can. Uh, we trying to start the baseball program, uh, full of players over at, uh, the, the, uh, Montecito Recreation Complex. Uh, Pat Smith Gillens and several others have implemented that program. And I'm trying to support it because I think he said he had right at a hundred kids this year. You know, participate in that baseball program, but they're not just a baseball program. They got to do their grades and stuff like that. And we provide different activities and stuff. So we gonna just go at it.
I like, uh, so and we we, I think both of y'all just said that, but going back to saying the team that you know is not for, uh, West Ocala. I think one of the biggest thing in the messaging, you know, even in, you know, you know, my position or that has to be communicated is. There's a natural thing for people to adapt to people that are in state of the system, you know? So if you're a black person, I would naturally adapt to a black person. And this actually came to my mind. So I'm a part of leadership Florida and I just was in a conference maybe about two weeks ago. It's probably a group of fifty people, but it's only like five black people. So if you're going to ring, naturally, you go to who you like. Okay. But so imagine if all the white people in that room go to each other, but and the black people go to each other, it's going to more so look like we are. Circling outside of them. You get what I'm saying? So we are building a little. At the end of the day, we're gonna have to separate ourselves to go accommodate them because they're the majority. So if I'm walking in the room, isn't that a disadvantage to me that I should feel like I can't go with my people? Because I have to seem as if I want to go into this group with everybody else to make it seem like I'm not trying to, I guess, be a disattached myself from them in a big group of people. What I'm getting at, I think we have to do a better job of communicating that it's okay to adapt to people that look just like you. Or to want the best for people that look like you. It's nothing wrong with that. I played the game of football. It's the best team game you ever played in the world. People from all of different parts of the world, different backgrounds, they come together for one common goal. It was some guys on my team I would never talk to outside of when we stepped between the lines or when we put our helmets on. That didn't matter. Cause when we put them helmets on, we gonna do whatever it take to get to the goal. And we had to start communicating. I don't, I mean, obviously we want teamwork and, but we not gonna be able to talk from every district. If we say district two and all other districts, everybody's not gonna maybe get along or see eye to eye. At the end of the day, we gotta have one goal. And I want you to know that it's okay to adapt. So like when we say addition two, it's okay for us to want the best for our people. It's okay for a white person to want the best, a Spanish person to want the best for their, but at the end of the day, we still gotta have one common goal for ourselves. But the more, the better we get, and so say if we had each race, we were its positions, running back quarterback, whatever it was. The better we get as a race, the better everybody else get as they raced, it's only gonna make us all together, better together. And I think that has to be communicated more because people make it a bad thing or is if I gravitate to my people more than others. It's nothing wrong with that.
And all my life, I worked, basically, all my life I worked as a super mouse. Simply because, go back to something that you said initially. Well, I wanted more. I worked. I had a gentleman that tell me that said, but say, don't you think you're gonna get ahead of us? Cause we been here. That was that woman word. Where I left him there. But because I wanted more for my family and for myself. My dad had taught me that. You, you, you talked earlier about doing, you know, not just being a follower, but being a leader. But also, as I've spoken, you have to be a good follower to be a leader. Here, you, you, you gotta know what, what you can do. In all of these years of being in supervisory, most of the time I was the only, I was close to the only, just what you talking about now. Man, I'm in an aquatic speed. How many you know of? Me and that water, we want, you know what I'm saying? But that, that's what we do and, and, and it's okay, like you said, for us to know that we don't have to migrate somewhere else to do this. But when we're on city council. And I think I said this to you on one-on-one basis, I have to sell those other four people a lot of time. They never walk in the issue. They have no idea or have a very little concept of the things that you go to through day to day. They didn't come through that. And again, remember now, we are a few generations separated from them because we was on that other thing. We was out there pulling that a cotton or whatever the cave may be and remember that. And I say this and I know it's a podcast, that's fine, but it, it's the truth. And that's what I live by. You know, they didn't want us to learn to read, this, that and another. But again, think about your great, 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 great. They wanted what was best for you. And if you, you work hard, you get there and you keep moving on and you always bring somebody on which and all through my course of my career, that's what I've been trying to do. Bring people along with me. Hey, at the end of these four years, the Lord don't tell me to run again. Hey, I'm hoping I got some of you young men or women right there, ready to do this. And I can be back there again, go back to the following. Now I could be back there somewhere. If you need something, you can holler at me, you know, with you. We need to encourage each other in our community. Just because I'm the same color you. I don't have less knowledge than those other people that is not the color of you. I didn't put those fifty years in by being a fool like, like older people tell you, they didn't get to be that age about being a fool, right? I'm about my peak. Anybody that knew me know I'm about my peak. We got to work together in our community. We got to come together as one. And we know that everybody's not gonna think the same or whatever, but it's all right. That's what make us good. We all four of us can sit up here and we got different opinions about stuff. But if we can sit here like men and talk about those things, and if you strongly believe in what you believe in and you share with me. Same. All of us gonna come out better. Because we got four sides of looking at things now. Now, in my heart, I got to see, you know, whether that, that's where I'm at. But, but yes, my mind could be changing like anybody else. And again, I love what I do. God have put me in places many, many times that I was the only one of us there. I served on for the Recreation Park Association. From Pensacola to Citrus County, I was the district two superintendent. All these recreational professions. I'm not going to use the term answer to me, but they was in that name where I was their leader. Yeah, on and on and on. You know, I mean, this, and that don't mean that for me. I get him the flip.
Yeah, so you, I was just gonna say that. I mean, that says a lot as a leader though, because at the end of the day, and I, I think, going back to what I originally said. A lot of the young people, so when we thinking about the, the, the line of work that we do when we mentor to these young boys. We want them to understand exactly what you just said. It doesn't matter who you are. And we, they're, we've gone to different schools and they're like, well, it's in the program, it's in cut different just for, for black young. No, we mentoring everybody. Cause everybody could use a mentor. But to your point, if we can, if we could come together as a people, our community in itself, not just this and two, not just Ocala. Florida, the United States can build a better community altogether if we come together. And I think that's, that's what's being missed. But if we, again, if we could get that pushed out to, cause a lot of times it's easy to get the kids to, to understand that.
Oh, most of the time.
Most of the time. It's the, it's the older ones that, that needs to actually hear. And that's what, that's what a problem come in at, because you have some that are stuck in their ways that can't see through their, their uh, their opinion, their own, their own respect, perspective, thank you, their own perspective that we, we as a people, we as a community can't move forward, so.
So let me ask you all something. Some of y'all been asking the question. And when you look around in the old West Ocala community. How many y'all been around there ten years, at least ten years? Have you not seen no different? What, what? Everything seem to remain the same day?
Glad you asked. See, it's the same. So I have a huge problem with us, Mr. The Day. Have his problem with us, cause we like to point the fakes. We like to put the blame on other people as if they're the reason for the situ- our situation or uh, we'd like to give our power away. Same thing we teach our boys, you give your power away by telling, saying, well, he did this shit. What could you have done this? Cause most situations, we have some control in that situation. And you have to be able to look at yourself and this, and what did I do wrong? And we don't do that. So if anybody, if I'm ten and I'm doing the same things at ten, at twenty as I've been doing at ten, something wrong with me. No matter what resources I had done that time, between those years, I should have been able to figure something out. We just talked, we got AI, we got the worldwide web. There's a lot of resources that we have available to us. In this day and age, if you're blaming somebody for the situation you in, it's your problem. I tell our boys all the time, we got boys that's, that dealing with lost parents. Uh, uh, all types of bad things. But at the end of the day, they still got a choice. We just talked yesterday, every day you wake up, you got a choice. And what are you gonna choose to do? I don't care what situation you're out for, Mr. The Day. Obviously, we gonna get you the help you need, but at the end of the day, you have a choice. And if you wanna uh whirl around your sorrow, then like the editing day, you choosing not to do the hard thing and you gonna get what life gives. Or you can put yourself in a situation to take what you want in life, be the driver of your life. A lot of people not trying to be the driver of their life, Mr. The Day. A lot of people would rather wake up and make excuses. Cause it's the easiest thing to do. Uh, it's easy for me to blame city councilors the day because you ain't up there making the right thing. You up there agreeing with the rest of them people and you ain't standing up your people.
So do they know what you, what you agreeing but? See, this is, listen again, this go back to what I'm talking about us becoming one, alright? I, I, I have town hall meetings and, and we can come up through talk. And I have a joke with Gitter and talk to me about something that so have no been, been as even in it. And then you're trying to find out, you, you try to figure out how to mitigate that. And, and, and have the person sit down and maybe, you know, we could talk one-on-one about that. Because what you're doing now, you're taking away valuable time to something that we could be getting to that is really uh helpful for our community. Okay, um. Me, I don't live on excuses. I, I, I know a lot of stuff, but it's not about what I know. Again, I'm gonna address the issues that the community have. And, and now, I, don't misinterpret me. I will turn that thing back on you and ask you why. You say this, this and this, and then maybe does three or four things that I may try to throw out there at you. Cause, cause I got also played devil advocate, because if you get this, what about this right here? You know, uh, uh, whatever the case may be, bottom line is there's a lot of things that we can do in our community.
Ourselves.
We, 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 we could make it happen. And then guess what? Others would, we gonna come into our community and help us do. And that's what I keep trying to shove at us. But then I get some a little pushback. That's fine, pushback. But we, we got to move forward. Now, let me say this. So there's, I said, there's a lot of things we need to do. So I'm gonna give you some examples, some stuff that this mean, I just, I would hope that we can sit down and have a conversation and talk about doing. We talk about housing, right? So where Mira Sue Ridge sits at right now. If you go back toward Bud the Quarter to MLK, then you go down one block to Northwest Twenty First Street. Then you come on up past the recharge park and come back to Mira Sue Ridge. You see all that property in there? There's two businesses in there. And they businesses. But I have proposed to city manager, hey, once you find out, you know, they're gonna come up out of there. Man, let's, let's get all of that land and build homes on. We got hands coming up over where the golf course was, right? Let's let the homes here. We got a cabin as own sitting right here. We got these homes on this corner. Let's, let's build this into a community, a viable community. On top of that, I'm, I'm working with Ramona Williamson and, and, and Ms. Ruth Reed and trying to start a Northwest Ocala Task Force, like we have at Parcell Hikes for the, on the Jones side. Where city staff and, and others come and sit down and, and be in their meetings and stuff and they can share with them the concerns for the immediate communities. And I'm looking at the hope of it and having four of those, cause then we got to go, you know, on the other side. And then the other side, on the other side where John crossed the street where the MLK memorial is at. And, and have these things. These things are important because now these people is being the guardians of their immediate community. We bring them all together to, to talk about the whole Northwest sector. But then you got four quarters within that sector. You know, these are the type of things that I'm trying to address. On top of employment, I, I would love to see that uh, we, we get a better ratio of minorities within the city. Uh, before the past uh, city manager left, she was moving in that direction and I would love to be able to continue that, but I need the support of the community. And I will be addressing that matter of fact, so that you all know, I plan on having a um town hall meeting, probably the last week in January. Okay, after the MLK celebration and stuff uh, in, in Northwest Ocala.
Heard it here first. It's closer, it's closer to you guys, closer to the town hall meeting. Um, I wanna um jump and I was thinking this as you was speaking. So I, we hear you. You know, I know y'all, I've heard from you. There's a stigma of our black leadership, um, that they aren't uh, strong leaders. Uh, that like you just said, that they sit in their positions and they, and they sit in and wait and don't build up the next leader. Okay, I wanna know your opinion on that, but I also gonna give you my standpoint of what I feel. I personally feel our leaders aren't courageous, alright? Courageous in a sense to where, you know, they play by the rules, and which isn't a problem. They, but when I say play by the rules, they do exactly what the job descriptions say. And they are scared to step out those lines, between those lines. Maybe because obviously you get one, you know, it's like, when I got in, I don't wanna mess it up. Whatever it is, but I think your leadership be have to be courageous, cause you gotta be able to will those lines to make room for other people. And I think we missed the mark on being courageous to help out, you know, our younger leaders or whoever else. We just play between the lines. So that, I was kind of a two-part question. I asked you, how do you feel about the standard of what people think and what they think? But I know you hear, I know you hear what they're gonna take about, talk about our black leaders. I wanna know how that make you feel? And I want to you to answer the question as well. Do you think our leaders are courageous?
Well, let me put to you later, it's our black people that's saying that. Where are they? Hit me, where are they? Those that talking about the ones that in leadership, where are they? They're on the sideline condemning those people that got in. Why didn't they get in that position? Because the people didn't want them there, because they are not. You hear, it's, it's a matter of fact. Why aren't there, why aren't they in that position of leadership? The people that there are not courageous is not standing up. Everything is not done in the public. And I hope you understand it. When you come to city council and you see me voting yes on something, I've studied. I've reviewed the information, not just from point of the, the staff giving the mess, the information to us. But if it was a code thing, the code co- uh commission as well, I've, I've studied what they say. I look at our charter, our ordinances and verify. And then sometime I have to call whatever department, whatever, and say, listen, I, I'm seeing an issue with this. I need, I need some more, some more clarity. Why aren't they in the position of leadership? Instead of standing back there condemning those that are? And you tell me that's not a fair question.
No, 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 it's a fair question. It's, it's, it's fair for one, but for two, I think when we talk about leadership in the black community. We have to, it's not more so you in your position as a city councilman because
And you're talking about in general, I got it.
Well, because more so in our community, most of the leaders, well, is doing it now. But there'll be your pastors of the church or your deacons of the church. Would be more often the leaders of the black community that's in there. So a lot of times, I think to, to your point that you're making, you have people that's on the sideline that'll sit there and see you because you're in a elected position. Whereas with churches is more so, or let's be frank, you know, sometimes it's very uh, clickish with, with, with pastors and such, um, and the way that they, they move up. So they can kind of dodge the heat that you get because they see it differently. When really, no, like they're in the community, they're, they're, they're leaders. Those churches are almost every corner in these neighborhoods. Yet in those same neighborhoods, there's a lack of education being given out so that they understand your job. And there's not a whole lot of collaboration on that front. So I think to Jamie's point where saying not courageous is things like that. Because it, it stagnates the, the community as a whole. There's no, no real innovation. And then even when you talking about young people coming up, being future leaders, it's almost a, it's, they being gate kept. So now it's like, unless you feel this mold that they say is correct to be a leader, you're not gonna get anywhere. Because they're not gonna pass off that, that, that seal of approval saying, okay, these people who only look towards the church. these people who only look towards the church for leaders don't like, don't, don't even, you know, don't even give, give a brother no, no time. But they basically is how it works. So that's kind of the problem from my understanding with, with our community. Um, and so basically for younger black men out there or women, it's like, well, what's the point? What's the point of trying to be that new leader? Because you know that you're gonna hit this, this ceiling eventually and unfortunately it come from our own. And it come from a very old school way of looking at leadership. And so we never truly promoted for one, and we don't teach them what it means to be a leader. So then they look at your position and they think, they can just go to the city council and say, council member there, I want this in the black community. And you can snap your fingers and it's gonna happen. That's, but we know that that's not how it works, but they don't understand.
But you're them phone calls that I get in the village like, no, something that's, I mean, you finally would like work again. Um, again, one of the things that, that, that I'm trying to do again is, is share with young people the, uh, A pad to leadership within the city, the county, the community. The city has committees and boards. That's what the other people do and they get their kids on the board and you can get on them. The school board has PTOs and they have committee. The, 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 the foundation, the city foundation, not the city, the school board foundation has committees. You see what I'm saying? The county commission have committees Ocala transportation and planning organization, the PTO. That's infrastructure, okay? We have advisory committees and things that they can get on. This is what we have to push. Again, like you're saying, if they don't know, no, but I'm gonna help people coming to my town hall meetings to spread and share this, this information to the young people and to anybody. Because, you know, any, any citizen can learn to be more informed if they participate. And that's what we got to do. We have to participate to, so that we can get more informed. You know, hey, and, and if, if I just only hang around you, only thing we can do is pass on what we know, right? But if we enlarge, expand, we're gonna expand our horizon and learn more and more about how things work. You know, a city is just like, it's just like a house. But it's on a much larger scale. You know, I mean, and then you got way more departments. And then you, then you got the county commission them right there and you got the school board, you got all of these things. And then let's, let's not, not leave out the business and the CEP. Over three hundred people meeting every Thursday, Wednesday at seven thirty in the morning. Church of Hope. Over three hundred businesses when we talk about needing to uh, uh, get, uh, scholarships and stuff for kids. We, we need to be trying to address some of these, cause some of these people, some of these organizations, especially the, the equine community. It may, we need to find a, a way to get in, into them. We gotta find a way, man.
Yeah. So many thing is, is that empowerment. Is, that's in the community and the citizens feel empowered. Then they're more likely to actually engage in the processes of everything as a whole. So to, to that, I, I definitely agree because so for example, with, with the recent election. So do you know off the top of your head, the amount of registered voters that actually voted in the election?
I do. I was waiting to get you. Since you jumped there, I can tell you.
So, eh, but the reason why I bring that up is because when you hear people talk about Ocala and then, and even if I wanna upscale to the national level, you hear all these talks about, uh, voter suppression and all these other things. But then when you look at the numbers, you have a good chunk of registered voters. Yet they still don't contribute. They don't even participate in their own local side of things. Yet they, they have all these critiques about the national. It's like, you're not even taking care of your own front yard, but you worried about the, the HOA and everybody else. It, it just doesn't add, it doesn't make any sense.
Let me give you these numbers. So, uh, and before I got there, cause I had some on my mind, I wanted to say to, uh, what you said in far as when you were saying, what they doing with saying other people, uh, like in, in that's, and we all, you know, you, we, we pointed out too, where as you were saying, I was kinda thinking, man, it gets to the point of time that there are doers and there's people that don't do, and we know that. And there's always gonna be more people that don't do it. And it made me think I put, so for the city, uh, councilman position, you gotta put yourself in the city, and I, this is my, my word. You're LeBron James of our community, in a sense. You know how much criticism LeBron James get? Hey, he look great. And you can't, you know, we, but I don't think LeBron ever thinks about the do, the don't doers. You get what I'm saying? So our mindset, we always gotta look above and find the ones that are doing. So instead of, you know, point out that, well, well, what they doing ain't about that. Well, who is doing something? Let's, let's go find them people and let's raise them people up.
With that, but you can't do one without the other. You, you gotta understand, you just said it. I don't need to re, re. We always have people that is not gonna do anything and all they're gonna do is talk about it. And all I was trying to make sure you understood. When you, when you say that a man or a woman is not doing, where are you? That's all I'm saying. Where are you? Let's not stand, like you were saying, let's not stand and criticize one another. I, I don't have, listen, I don't have time for it. There's too much positive things going on. And that's what I'm trying to do. Trying to bring us together first. And then we gonna bring, I, I really believe in that slogan, one Ocala, one America. Because we can make, man, we can change the complexity of the state of Florida.
Yeah.
Right here.
I love that we all stay on that same mindset. Every, every, every guest so far and even amongst ourselves, we all say that Ocala could be the, the candidate.
Kind of saying, we gonna do that. I love it. And we gonna keep, but I'm gonna get you so to get it back to you, Miles. So I'm gonna say these numbers and you can go back to your point. Um, so we had, uh, the supervisor of elections and, and it's crazy that you got to this, cause you haven't seen this. But I pulled this because I was, as I seen the number of people that vote, that was, I was like, bro, this is crazy. So the records show that there was thirty seven thousand, seven hundred and, uh, seven hundred and seventy nine active voters. The cast votes were two thousand eight hundred and fifty three. Eight percent of voters. So we had eight percent of the voters, registered voters that voted, to the real question.
That was, they consider that as a lot.
And that's, but
It was an increase from the previous.
Hell, it wasn't. It wasn't. Like I said, yeah, in twenty twenty.
Right.
You know, this thing, uh, hooks. Uh, ten percent. So it was thirty seven thousand, four hundred and forty six. And, uh, in, so only ten per, ten percent of voters voted then, and now we dropped down to eight percent.
Now, you know the difference is, right?
Talk, now, what, what?
It was just only us on, 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 in the vote.
This one, yeah. And, um, okay, and that makes, I didn't think of mine that.
Do you have the statistics of Democrats? I thought, because they, they probably didn't put that in there because it's a nonpartisan race. But I can tell you this, you probably look and we, we look at, um, the people in this community in District Two and look at how many people voted. It, it would astound you how many people didn't vote.
It would be the same with criti- critique.
You'll be surprised that there was a majority of the, of the people that voted
Yeah.
in this, in this election. And my thing is how can we change that concept? You know, I, in the street, I expect people to say certain thing. But when you, when you have some type of knowledge, some type of education, you know that some of the stuff you saying is, is not true.
Right.
They gonna do what they wanna anyway. You know, stuff like that. Sure. If you don't vote, come on, if we don't vote, yeah, yeah, we're gonna do what they're gonna do because all they got did is vote.
Yeah.
Cause you hadn't voted. And those are the things that touch me. I, I, I would love to see us uh, be able to increase the number of people. So one of the things I'm trying to do is do, uh, voter registration drives, which you got to go out now and get certified and, and stuff, cause they, they started last year doing it all together different. But, you know, have some voter registration drives at all the different big events that we had. See, can we, 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 we get people to, to understand and, and again, like you were saying, being positive out there in the world and, 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 and letting people see that you're a confidence in some, some of the tasks that you're trying to do and become a believer in.
And I think, um, so in this even going to what we were trying to do, you know, when I contacted you and doing that voter thing, I think that's the change. Cause I, like, I'm a, literally now, I'm not, I'm a thirty year old man, like, trying to catch up. Because there was like voter, that wasn't taught to me and doing going and learning about the parties and this stuff wasn't taught to me. So now that I'm in a position now and I understand how this world work and I understand the importance of politics. It's like, man, why was nobody feeding me stuff at early age so I could have been savvy and up on game? So now I'm gonna feed it to our youth, man. You, this is important. You wanna make some change. You gotta get up in this world. You gotta know what's going on. So from the sense of what we were trying to do, we getting the young people involved in, 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 in the, the past, you know, election that just happened. I think that's the change. Like, we gotta, we gotta feed this to these kids. Hey, man, this is what's going on.
And two, to, with that, with the educating the youth on politics. Two, my, one of my biggest pet peeves is how we put so much focus on the mudslinging aspect that we, it, it actually makes a politician's job easier. Because now you don't even really have to talk about policy. You just throw enough dirt this way and you can get a dog. And it's like that, but that's such a poor mindset, especially if we talking about truly being different and bringing up the youth correctly and focusing on the education bit. And that's why, you know, it's unfortunate that what we were trying to do didn't go that way because that was a complete betrayal of what we set out to do. We said we want different. We wanna actually be genuine and educate. I'm, stop the muddling, stop the, you know, the, the BS and just actually genuinely try to help people out. And then through that genuineness, you would get people to buy in. But when you do things backwards and, and, and underhanded, you know, you, you keeping the same thing going, you keeping the same type of just poor education going, poor politics going.
And I think that gotta be spoken to, man. Too many times we let stuff slide, or we let stuff, you know what I mean, go unknown. It's like, nah, bro, that was fire. You know what I mean? Or you speaking it to it because people do tell you what you allow them to do and people can stir stuff up to seem some way that it's not. But I think in order to move forward, you gotta be able to, 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 to stand on something and be like, what'd I say? You stand some, you'll stand some, you fall for anything. It's like, nah, this should have went this way. Like we literally was doing something to pull our youth up and it didn't go the way it was supposed to go because of
Yeah.
this. And that's wrong.
Yeah.
Wrong is wrong. I was always talking that. My mother did always told me, wrong is wrong, right is right. And you're wrong, you're wrong, you're right, you're right. And we gotta be able to speak to that as a group. And I think, but to, 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 to you, Mr. But they, I think going forward, we have to be able to build, um, court, whatever it is, things when we get youth in the room, it was hitting one top.
Well, I don't have a problem.
Whatever it is, and speak it, hey, this is how you maintain, showing live examples. This is how they got this done because they built this party, built this, this committee and they started chopping it and they got it done. But you have to show these kids, man. You can't just come up and think that, you know, they're gonna get it. Nah, let's show them. Let's take them step by step, hand by hand and, and be able to build those type, you know, those things in their mind.
Like I said, trust and working with, we can do it. And I, I've worked with you all and worked with the other, other people in our community and, and our city. You know, cause again, I, I would say it takes all of us. Uh, you know, on the city council, we don't always agree. Can we don't?
Yeah.
But we, we talk about it. That, do, do, do y'all know that's the only time we can talk about anything that's gonna come across the desk? See, we, we can't talk about anything that gonna come across the desk. We can't sit back there and only even talk about it. The only time we can talk about it because of the sun channel. We have to talk about it right there. Yeah. So, so we, we don't get chance to talk about things outside of it, but we agree to disagree. See, y'all remember Ms. Ruth? Which was a fireball.
Yeah.
Well, I used to say that. When Ruth, she go in it, she, she fall. I do the same thing, but I'd, I'd do it a little different. And that's one thing that we're all gonna learn, that we all have our techniques that we use to get what we need to you get off the base. Well, all not the same.
Yeah. How was it coming after her? I wanted to ask you that. So you came right after Ms. Rich, the legendary,
Yes.
um, Ms. Rich and, you know, she what, twen- twenty plus years?
Twenty four years.
Twenty four years. And you come right behind her. How was that for you? Was any type of like nervousness coming falling behind, you know, such, such, such a proud woman? Okay. So she did what we been talking about. She, she, she
But she know I was her second and I didn't know it.
Okay.
You know what I mean by that? You do.
There's a, like she, she was grooming you to be.
But I was her second, meaning that if something occurred over a period of time and she could not be at city council because illness or whatever, then I would be the one that would take her place.
How, how, how was you that and you didn't know?
Well, she, she signed me. Although she's supposed to tell me.
Okay.
No, you, you, you have three to seven people that you can put as your second.
Yeah.
Now, believe this, they're not gonna call on you unless and there's something that has to get passed by a certain time. And there are certain documents, okay? That we have to, we have to sign. If we approve it, we have to sign it by a certain time. So that would be the only reason they would call and not just for a journal, a journal, uh, you know, meeting. But there will something come across that doc, docket that was imperative.
Don't get that call. So, so I, do you have your second? I know you say Ms. Rich ain't, she didn't tell anybody. Well,
I got three.
Me? I'm on you.
Shit.
Any, I was glad, but, uh, so we, 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 we getting, uh, I know we probably went about an hour now. I wanna, um, kinda, you know, in, in closing, get to the point, I wanna, I wanna ask you. Um, I don't know if you have measures of success, out of any position you have, people wanna know are you being successful? Um, so what are your, I guess, measures for success and have you been successful in your team?
I think in the time I've been there, we've been, been very successful. There's things that we've done. And, and people don't know what you do, cause they say it's everyday stuff. But anything over fifty thousand dollars, they have to come across the desk of the city council. And we, we sign off on it, right? So like, let's just roll repaving roads and stuff. Over in the area of Ponce de Hikes, over in the area of Northwest Ocala over there. We paid both right off from Liddy, um, Liddy and Brian and Mira Sue Rich. Uh, you go down those streets and stuff, you see they all been resurfaced. Uh, working on water and sewer drainage for straight cross from the, um, Mira Sue Rich down the road straight in front of it. I don't know, but there's a, there's a flat area in there. And, and, and it's when, when you have real bad lane, it pulls up and all, got them working. We working to, 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 you know, to take care of that. Again, like I said about the Northwest Ocala Task Force, working on those type thing. Of Mira Sue Rich, just so that you know, and ten years ago, took the ten continuous year people uh, to went apart to see a state of the art facility. We came back, we was able to sell city council. So we started the planning stages, but we had no money. Mira Sue Rich cost a little bit than ten million dollars to, to build. Again, I was one of those instrumental people to get this facility because again, I ran the recreation division, a recreation park. There's a standard that you have to go by. If you have extra number of people utilizing the facility, you have, have to have certain amenities to make, you know, it viable for people to be able to come. And we had overgrown the cross section. I think, so again, brought that back and we got that city council to approve it and through the years, we've been feeding it. And here it is, uh, it was like eight years later. We got a chance to build it. The recharge park, same thing. I, I didn't even want the golf course people wait, walk the golf course for thirty two years going away. The city was, you, well, get rid of it because they had two golf courses. And in, in Ocala, I don't know, did y'all notice, but you, you got twelve or thirteen golf courses within thirty five minutes from one another. So the city said, well, why do we need two golf courses? Why do we need two golf courses? So, you know, we, we fought, we fought, we fought a good fight. So now we got homey and a partners and things going in there.
So real quick, Mr. But I know we running short on time.
So real quick, Mr. But that, I know we run short on time, but one thing I, I see all the time, especially or online on the Okella news. Um, page and, and different comments being made. One thing people always talk about, largely complain about is growth. I know there's always certain things that you can talk about, but for those that, that have a, a hesitation about the growth. Coming in Okella and being afraid of losing the older school type, uh, of city that Okella was. You know, do you, what, what's your take on that? Or to at least way to explain to people because they made me seeing it from a, a different perspective and they're, they're just not understanding.
I believe in growth to a certain extent. One thing that a lot of people don't understand, uh, the city council has to, uh, vote on a lot of land issues and that's where this growth thing come from, right? But developers look at things for a long run. In other words, most of the time that developers bought properties here in Okella ten, fifteen years ago. And during that time, they took and got the land zone. And what they wanted to put there. Now, back then, let's go down ten, fifteen years back then, the public had the right to give input. They sat back and they didn't do it. Okay. So now, Jamie, you ready to build on your program? And you got the whole world coming out talking about, oh, no, we can't build that anyhow. There's a thing called quasi judicial, mean that we have to go by the letter of the law. We can't go by our feelings. And that's why a lot of times we have to vote that because we, we can't stop it. Now, if they come and want to try to make an amendment to do something. Now we have some leverage, you know what I'm saying? Most of the time, we, we get the, uh, developer and the citizens in that area to sit down to the table. And have a conversation. How can we make this less detrimental to the area? And, and, and a lot of time it works out. Okay. Uh, I believe in growth, but to a, to a limit. Uh, again, a lot of things you hear about is the building stations and the car wash. Okay. But again, let's go back to when we had. The property been there and people own the property. The people already had the property zone years ago. For something that fits in that category.
Right.
We cannot tell them they can't do it. Okay. Think about Rayshite. Rayshite came in here and they built five or six different gas stations, right? Then they took two of them and built two no, and they sitting there. Man. Now that's the part that I don't.
Right.
Tether sucker down, set it, let somebody get in, but don't, don't let it sit up there and looking.
Right.
There. Okay. So that's how I feel about goat. I'm, I'm, I'm just going back off that because, you know, where we, where we can avoid some, we try to. But there are certain things we cannot do.
Right.
Cause we'll be going against really what the law says.
And that's maybe why I was trying to get, get that information out to, to the public. Cause I know not a lot of people know about quasi judicial.
Right.
They don't know about kind of the way that your hands can be tied, uh, with that whole situation. And I'm glad that you brought up saying the whole ten to fifteen years, a, a plan could have been proposed. So can you give the, the viewers watching, especially those as local, dates and times when these meetings happen? Because again, yes, these days are posted online, but we know that some people just.
Well, I, I can tell you city council meetings, there you go, it's first and third, uh, Tuesdays at four PM. At city hall on seventh floor in the city council chamber. Now, when we talk about coding for, man, I cannot really just tell you when that meeting is and I really think it's the last Thursdays. At like five thirty and a lot of time they have these meetings in city council chambers. Okay. Uh, and again, you can live on, you can go on okellafl.gov. And the meetings are posted there. All you got to do is put it in a search box and they'll tell you where all of, you know, when and where all the meetings.
So that was okellafl.gov.
Dot gov.
Okella FL dot gov to get all the information, man. We got to cut out for the excuses. It's time to get rid of excuses. Uh, we had the information you're hearing from your city councilman right now. Um, he's, he's telling you, you know, his vision and the things that actually going on right now. You can go to okella, okella FL dot gov to get all the information on the meetings. You can start waiting on the sidelines and start, you know, bull with the people in the game and get in the game yourself. All right. And come score some buckets yourself and you know, if you feel good, score buckets and you get them buckets and, you know, you can get the praise and all the other stuff that come with it. Uh, but Mr. But they, we, we appreciate you for coming on today, man. Uh, uh, we really, uh, we got to get aligned and, uh, get a schedule, get something together. Uh, where we can really start, you know, getting our young voters involved, uh, bringing our young leaders up. We talk about it, we got to do it. We're going to, we got to do it. So we'll get together, we'll make sure, uh, we get aligned. Uh, but we're going to close out. Y'all felt good, everybody? Y'all good? Y'all good? Mr. But thank you. So we're going to close out with you. Before we close out, uh, if you haven't subscribed, hit that button. It is free. It is free to support. Just hit that button, subscribe to us. You'll be able to hear from special people, um, like Mr. But thank. Uh, you can follow us on Instagram at EL two A podcast, as on Facebook at EL two A podcast as well. Please support. It costs nothing to support. You're going to be getting good information that guidance, attention, motivation and education. Um, on this podcast, uh, you have the permission and liberty and the access to live your best life. So why not do it? All right. So Mr. But thank, I'm going to turn it over to you to close it out, sir. No pressure. But I just want you to look at your camera right there and I want you to tell, speak to the people, to the Okella and to the world. And get the people a message to end this podcast. You can even get some resources where they can find stuff for yourself if you got anything going on.
All, all I think I want to tell you is this, be part of the, the solution, not part of the problem. Step out on the faith. Help us, help us. I, I know that's two us's, but help us, help us.
I love it.
Is, is very important. We're here. You can reach me anytime. I put thank at okella FL dot gov. Thank you.
Help us, help us. Let's get it. We out. Sir, appreciate you.